Okay, good evening and welcome to the Calabasas City Council meeting of August 11th, 2021. It is shortly after 7:00 PM. We've emerged from a closed session. Tonight, I'm joined by Mayor Pro Tem Mary Sue Mauer, council members Peter Kraut, Alicia Weintraub, and David Shapiro. This meeting is being conducted utilizing Zoom teleconferencing. The live stream of the meeting may be viewed on the city CTV Channel 3 and/or online at www.cityofcalabasas.com/CTVLive. If you plan to provide public comment, please press raise hand if you're joining via Zoom or star nine if you're joining via phone and star six to unmute yourself. Please state your name and city you live in. You'll be allowed three minutes to address the city council regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. In the event a quorum of the city council loses electrical power or suffers an internet connection outage not corrected within 15 minutes, the meeting will be adjourned and the items noticed as public hearings will be continued to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council. Any other agenda items the council has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. Matt, before we start in, is there anything to report from closed session?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council met in closed session to consider the first item, conference with real property negotiator regarding 27040 Malibu Hills Road, Calabasas, and took no reportable action. The other two items for closed session were our continued to the end of the meeting. No reportable action is expected. Thank you.
Okay, and the pledge of allegiance will be led once again by our C. Clerk, Mari Hernandez.
Please join me in saluting our flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Kraut. Councilmember Shapiro.
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mauer.
Yes.
Mayor Bosajin.
Aye.
Kerry's.
Thank you. We're now at the part of the agenda where we're going to be recognizing Jeffrey Pelton for his service on the community center board. Can you bring in Jeffrey Pelton if he's here? I don't.
He is.
Okay, if you could just take a moment to bring him in. Hello, Jeffrey. You can unmute yourself. Jeffrey, I want
Yes, thank you.
Join the city council in thanking you for your service on the Board of Directors of the Agoura Hills Calabasas Community Center Joint Powers Authority. I hold up these certificates and they don't they're not able to be seen, but we do have one for you. And your service was from March 2018 to May 2021. And you started out, I guess, as an alternate and you ended up as a full voting delegate. We appreciate your service and you know, the community center has gone through some rough times. So, you know, we appreciated what you did and we hope that you continue to be part of the Calabasas community and come there when it's reopened.
I look forward to that and I thank you and I thank the entire council for their efforts in supporting the center. And I'm happy to see that looks like we're gonna, you know, turn the corner on it. So again, thanks. Thank you, everybody.
Good, and we will send you this certificate. Would anyone else like to say anything?
Thank you very much for your service, Jeffrey.
Thank you so much for your contribution.
Okay.
Thanks very much, Jeff. Appreciate it very. And I like the Willie Mays photo in the background.
It's autographed, by the way. Yes.
Okay, thank you, Jeffrey. And we'll move on to the next item, which is council member announcements. We'll start with David Shapiro.
First of all, I just want to say welcome back to everybody. We've been off for a bit and congratulate our mayor, James Bazajin, who had a wonderful swearing in as president of the LA County section of the League of California Cities. It was a beautiful event and it was great to be out. We also had a wonderful time. Peter and I attended the concert at the lake last Sunday and it was probably one of the biggest crowds we've had there. Everybody had a wonderful time as well. So, great job by our city staff putting on a great event. And that all occurs in light of the, I must bring up again, the recent increases in our community in LA County for COVID numbers, especially the Delta variant is certainly growing and spreading throughout the community. So, please, if you have the opportunity to, and there is, you'll hear an announcement shortly about it, but get vaccinated if you can and please wear masks where appropriate. There's requirements at indoor facilities and I'm sure more requirements will be coming. Thanks very much.
Lisa Weintraub?
Following up the importance of getting vaccinated and the city of Calabasas is doing our part by offering a vaccine clinic tomorrow at Founder's Hall from 10 to 12. It will be the Pfizer vaccine and walk-ins are welcome. Anyone ages 12 and older, if you are under 18, please come in with an adult, but we just cannot encourage enough how important it is to get vaccinated to stop the spread of COVID and especially the Delta variant.
Your crowd.
Thank you. I too want to join my fellow council members in reminding everybody that we are still in the height of pandemic and the Delta variant and other serious you know, causes of spread for us. So, we have to be careful. Please continue to wear your masks out there and if you can at all get out to get a vaccine, if you're capable, if you're, if you can get a vaccine, you should. In other news, I do want to mention, this is Cougars and Crossing Week, August 9th to the 16th. And there's a lot of virtual and in-person events going on. In particular, I want to draw your attention to the Coexistence Workshop and Wildlife Crossing Open House. It'll be Sunday, August 15th from 1:00 to 4:30 at King Gillette Ranch. And if you want more information on that, you can find that at savelacougars.org.
Mary Sue Mauer.
I just wanted to tag on to that last announcement that if you or your family have not gone to King Gillette Ranch, I strongly encourage you to go. It's a wonderful place for families and children. I also want to mention that the FDA has just announced that a third vaccination of Pfizer and Moderna has just been announced for those with compromised immune systems that could start as soon as tomorrow. So that is big news and I am hearing and knowing quite a few vaccinated people that are having breakthrough COVID Delta variant illnesses. So, please continue to wear your mask. The last concert of our very popular Lake series will be on Sunday, July or August 29, 6:00 PM at the lake, where we'll have covers of Elvis Presley and some other legendary rockers. So, come on out for our hard-to-believe last concert of the summer season. The Calabasas Chamber of Commerce will be honoring our mayor, who will be giving a speech at the mayor's annual luncheon. That will be Friday, August 20th at the Country Club. It'll be held outdoors. So, I hope you will all join us in supporting our mayor. And I think that's it for me.
Well, I had planned to make a, an announcement regarding the upcoming special gubernatorial recall election, except for September 14th, but in alluding to some local news regarding that, in my letter to the community last week, I received a very curt order from one of our residents not to discuss the election, that it was improper for the city to distribute any information about the election or for me to talk about it. So, out of respect for that resident, I'm not going to tell you that the election is on September 14th. I'm not going to tell you that the city of Calabasas was very fortunate after pursuing getting a local polling place for the convenience of our residents, that we have secured an early voting site. I will not tell you that the early voting site will be open on September 11th to September 13th. I will not tell you that the hours of that voting site, which is an in-person site, is 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM on those dates. And I will not tell you that on election day itself, September 14th, that voting site will be open regular precinct hours from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Furthermore, I'm not going to tell you that we're trying to get an 11-day early voting site for the convenience of our residents, which would be 11 days prior to the election. So, if you want any information about the election, you'll have to go to the Los Angeles County Register Recorder or the State of California Secretary of State. Mari, have I left anything out?
Mr. Mayor, the only other thing is that the vote-by-mail drop box will be open on August 16th, which is next Monday. And that will be open 24 hours for the convenience of our voters to return their vote-by-mail ballot.
And can you tell us where that's going to be exactly?
The sixth, right in front of our Civic Center, 100 Civic Center Way in Calabasas.
Okay, thank you all very much. We'll move on on the agenda. And this is a time for oral communications and public comment. Any persons wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. It must be within the subject matter, the jurisdiction of the city council. You will have three minutes or less to address the city council. If your hands up for anything, any other item on the agenda, please hold that because I have no way of knowing what you're going to be talking about. But this is only for items not on the agenda. I see one. And Mari, do you have any call-ins?
That's the only end. We have Mr. Mayor.
So, I have, it's, the name is Timmy, T-I-M-I. If that person could be brought in, we'll start with that person's name and city of residence, please.
Hi, my name's Timmy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm the founder of Quiet Sky SWH, which represents the western end of San Fernando Valley. So, our membership includes Calabasas, Woodland Hills, West Hills, Bell Canyon, and Chatsworth Reservoir area. I know that a couple of you are familiar with what I'm calling about. It has to do with the LAX Lady J Departure Route that is decimating the quality of life for several hundreds of Calabasas residents. That number could be in the four digits. We haven't had time to really calculate every household yet. I did hear from no less than 24 of your constituents today making sure that I was speaking because they all were writing letters and refraining since they didn't see this item on your agenda today. So, that is probably why I am the only one here as the representative, if you will. So, I presented you guys by means of an email to Alicia and hello, Alicia. Thank you so much for communicating with me. I'm wondering if you guys had time to go through that information and well, it's public comment, so you can't reply. But basically, I'm hoping you went through that information. I know your constituents are eager for you to engage the way that several Los Angeles city council members have. And I want you to know that last night, I participated along with a couple of the representatives of Los Angeles city council members for a Van Nuys FAA meeting where thanks to the push from city council members, the FAA finally agreed to modify the southerly departure waypoints that are negatively impacting new communities since the next-gen implementation. And I tell you that because this is not just a federal issue. This is being fought locally and this is why we need you. You guys are at a disadvantage because based on all my research, I do believe that the FAA negligently and unlawfully failed to notify both you and the city of Hidden Hills that this was occurring. So, you guys were all blindsided. However, it is what it is now and there are things you can do and I would love you to jump on board. And I'm here to offer whatever I can to assist you if you wish to assist your constituents.
Okay, thank you.
Zero.
Thank you. Sorry. Well, you were very respectful of the zero. Thank you very much. And we may be addressing that at the end of the meeting, but thank you very much. As it was pointed out, we can't discuss it. It's not agendized. So, all right, Mari, anybody else?
No, Mr. Mayor, we have no other answer.
Okay, I'm going to close public comment. And we're going to go to the consent agenda, which has items one through nine. I would like to take off two, three, and nine. Mary Sue, would you like any items taken off?
No additional, no.
David? David, would you like any items?
No, thank you.
Peter?
No, thank you.
Alicia?
Thank you.
Okay. With regard to two and three, we might need to bring in some staff. My question, I guess two and three are related. So, my question is, I didn't see on the bids, like a bid chart like we normally have unless I missed it. Don't we usually have a list of all the bids that came in? Can someone from maybe Public Works come in? Robert, hi, Robert. Hi, Robert. Robert.
Hi, Council.
On item two, don't we normally have a bid chart so that we can see what the bids were?
This is about design and the design had multiple variation. So, in the background, you mentioned we had three specific proposals. Those are our existing extension of the staff. And Fusco Engineering had more familiarity with project and their value was lower than other ones. But I'll be more than happy on the next report to add their proposal and the cost estimate. In this one, we just added the company that we are awarding.
Well, the only, the only thing that I would note is in the past, sometimes we get disparate bids and there are questions about it from the public and from the council, particularly because sometimes people lowball the bid and then we wind up with poor service. And I just was curious, were the bids within a reasonable range of each other this time?
They are. Again, this is a design aspect, is not the construction. On the construction, we definitely add when we do bed opening and a chart and a breakdown. This was specifically staff support. Because of shortage of the staff, we end up requesting for proposal to do the Green Street designs because of some grant funding will be jeopardized if you don't finish this design by end of the year.
All right. Is there, on item three, is there any kind of PowerPoint presentation on this or not? I don't want, you know?
This is just simply agreement with Metro. They would like us that councils see the agreement for the project that they will do. So, on the agreement, it's for Mall Hall and we already have done the preliminary conceptual design. And we are here just asking council to approve the agreement with Metro for the dollar amount $6,513,250. Then, we award the project to MNNS for construction document first. Then, we will advertise the project for construction. So, this one is agreement with Metro.
Okay, the thing I would ask on this one, though, is that as we move forward on the project, please keep the community informed, particularly regarding closures or limitations on that street because it's so utilized. And you know, any changes in the patterns are going to be disruptive. Even, even if they're necessary, they're going to be disruptive. I want people to have advance notice.
Will do. When we get to the construction stage, we definitely going to have public workshop, public notification. As I mentioned, item three is agreement with Metro to spend the funding on the project. So, we attach what was the conceptual plan.
And then we get reimbursed item by item, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Authorizes us to spend the funding and get reimbursed.
All right. Well, that was it. Does anyone else have any questions based on what I asked? Okay, thank you, Robert, as always.
Sure, no problem.
Um, my question on number nine probably is, I guess Michael Klein's here. You know, I support this, this item, but in the past, and maybe Kendon, I don't know that we've had this since you've been here, we have always had this as a separate item for discussion in open session. I, this is actually just a council policy decision. And I think it's, it should not be on consent with a staff recommendation. It should be an open item because if it's done this way, I just have this thought that maybe in the future, if, if we don't reimburse somebody, they're going to not like the fact that it wasn't an open and public discussion and it was somehow looks like an internal discussion that we built some kind of consensus. So, in the future, I would definitely expect to see these as a separate item as they always have been. I don't remember it ever being on consent like this. Was there a reason why this was put on consent like this with a recommendation?
I don't know if we have a specific reason. Michael, I didn't know the history on this. And so, I think the point is well-taken. We'll have this on open session items in the future.
It sounded criticism so much as I just wondered if there was a specific thing about this item that made it like, had there been a pre-agreement of the council? I don't remember it coming to us before.
No, absolutely not. And you know, these requests come through planning, you and far between. So, it's just a, not something that we deal with too often. And it wasn't anything out of the ordinary. I think the last one that we had was back in 2018 or 2019. So, but moving forward, we'll remember to do that.
Okay, does anybody else? I support this. So, it's not a question of that. Does anybody else have any questions about this item or comments? Okay, thank you, Michael. And we're now ready for a vote on, may I have a motion to approve consent items one through nine?
I'll make a petition to approve consent items one through nine.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please, Mari.
Councilmember Kraut.
Aye.
Councilmember Shapiro.
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Mauer.
Yes.
Mayor Bosajin.
Aye.
Kerry's, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. We'll turn to new business. Item number 10 is Old Town Sidewalk Replacement Project Updates. And we need to bring in Tatiana Holden and Robert Yalda.
Thank you. Yes, Member of Council. I would like to introduce you, my new deputy of public work. I'm very pleased to announce that Tatiana has accepted to become Deputy Public Work Director. She's going to be helping department and we are slowly, surely adding the staff that is needed. And thanks to Kendon, he's been fully supporting the department to proceed with all the projects we have. So, Tatiana, this is your first presentation as a deputy public work. I know you will do your best and go ahead, start your PowerPoint presentation.
Thank you very much for introduction and for the support. I will share the screen. I'll be happy to start the presentation. Tonight, I will be presenting updates for the Old Town Sidewalk Replacement Project. Where we are at this moment, what is proposed to be part of this project and what are the next steps? This slide shows project limits. We are improving Calabasas Road, but it includes the replacement of deteriorated sidewalk and more elements, which I'll go into detail with the later with next slides. But basically, this project starts from Park Granada and extends all the way through Old Town to El Cannon and to on the north side of the street to the Caltrans ramp. The project includes first and foremost, replacement of deteriorated sidewalk. It's, it's reaching its life cycle and all its life cycle. It's about 30 years in. And it's been uneven. It's been moving. It's now becoming a trip hazard and liability for the city. And it's definitely time to look into replacement. And we in, together with the replacement of the sidewalk, we're introducing more elements that also need updates and upgrades. For example, the streetlights on Calabasas Road, they are basically very, very difficult or even impossible to maintain because we cannot find the parts. They're very old. They're not LED style. It's, it's time to get the new streetlights and I will details later, but here on this slide, you can see the design elements that are included in the project. And together with the replacement of the sidewalk, we will also replace utility cover to match the new sidewalk. We'll look into the replacement of fencing, bollards, traffic sign poles, benches, et cetera. The material that are over there right now are mostly wood and it's also deteriorating. It's, it doesn't look nice anymore. So, it's time to, to get a new facelift to Old Town. Sidewalk will be done with stamped concrete, which will look basically this similar to what's over there right now. It's deck style will look like wood, but it will be stamped concrete, which means it will be much less maintenance, much longer lifecycle, and it will look nice. Other elements, this is just for comparing the existing amenities shown on the left and recommended changes on the right. As I mentioned before, we do have fence, wooden bollards, wooden posts, which are we proposing to replace with precast concrete. Again, much longer lifecycle, easier maintenance. We will match the look of the Old Town Calabasas. The color, color scheme will be similar to what's out there right now. We will keep the existing hardware that's attached to the posts and will reattach it. And basically, we'll keep the same look, similar look, but better. This has a similar showing existing amenities on the left and recommended changes on the right. This change from the previous slide, it includes the streetlights, which as I mentioned, that will be efficient LED lighting, updating light poles with double arms for sidewalks and for traveling. So, this is actually changed not only from old style or broken lights to the new lights, but it's actually improvements to providing better illumination for pedestrian as well for the travel lane. And we will, we can use this poll we'll introduce for signs like shown on this slides. We can install different signage for, for city events, for different street events can be used for that. We will also include upgraded landscape features because again, we do have trash cans and plant pots that are made of wood and a lot of them are, don't look nice anymore, broken. They're also easy to get hit by the car and get damaged. Recommended changes include the, again, precast concrete, similar look, similar color scheme, but it will be made from precast concrete. The installation will be done a little bit differently. So, they're not close to the, to the curb. So, it'll be more difficult to damage them, to hit them. In terms of replacing our existing benches, again, it will be similar. It will be wooden bench. So, it will be comfortable to sit. But we would like to install a middle arm to prevent somebody sleeping on the bench. Along with deteriorating sidewalk, our crosswalks in Old Town are also deteriorating and also becoming tripping hazard. And we are proposing to replace that as well. The picture on the right shows proposed changes with impavement flashers, which are basically done for safety, most, mostly for safety. which are basically done for safety, most, mostly for safety. However, the design element and current look of the crosswalk will be kept. Uh, the material will be similar. We will use, uh, cobblestone and pavers with a similar pattern, similar colors to what's out there right now. But we will reinstall all four crosswalks. Trees and, uh, plants will be also replaced. There are a few trees that will be removed because they're represent right now, they represent the line of sight issues for, for pedestrians. Um, so some of them will be removed, but, uh, we will plant new trees, which will be sidewalk friendly. The roots less aggressive that are trees out there right now. And we will replace the pots with the nice flowers from the list that was, that's approved by the landscape maintenance, um, division. And, uh, we will, we are now working on the final comments for civil drawings as well as for land drawings. And, um, here is an update for, uh, next step for the project. We're, we're working right now on the final, um, completion of plans and specifications. And, uh, estimate for the project, wanting to advertise bid for construction next in September. Start construction on the last quarter of this year. Construction duration is approximated to be six months. Construction cost approximately two and a half million for an engineer's estimate and project funding is at the warm account. And this concludes my presentation. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. First, we will turn to public comment. I don't see any hands raised, but if you'd like to comment, now would be the time. Mari, uh, while we're waiting for that, did we get any call in?
There's none, Mr. Mayor.
No?
No, none.
Okay. Um, I don't see any public comments, so we'll close this, this port, that, this portion of the items. Um. Robert, did you want to add some?
Yes, I just want to let council and public know that this was presented to historical commission and traffic transportation commission, very similar presentation. We received their input and comments, they were all incorporated. Me and Tatiana felt like it's important council to see what we are doing. If you have anything else you want to add, we still have a time and a chance to make modification. We did our best to stay with Old Town Calabasas master plan that was created back in nineteen ninety-two, I believe, or whatever we had. So as Tatiana mentioned, we keep everything to existing look, but with longer life expectancy. And traffic transportation commission definitely like their plans, they like the safety crossing. Historical commission had some comment on specific elements and they incorporate their comments into the project.
Great, thank you. Um, Peter, I see your hand up first, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, thank you. I just have a couple of comments on our design elements, uh, in particular, first the light poles. Uh, we obviously have a dark sky ordinance, but in addition to that, we've seen projects on Agora Road in, uh, Agora Hills, where the lights are extremely visible from a horizontal approach. Um, so I want to make sure that our, our city staff is looking hard at the light selections to make sure that we're casting light downward and not horizontally and certainly not upward. And then also, as we go to a, uh, an LED light, LED lights are most often, uh, a cooler temperature bulb than one would anticipate for an old town environment. So a warmer light that gives off more of a reddish tone as opposed to the white or blue tones, uh, is kind of essential to maintain that old town atmosphere. As far as the, uh, the sidewalk, I'm excited to see a concrete sidewalk going back in there. Uh, but one of the troubles we're going to have with a concrete sidewalk is going to be the tree root. So, uh, I think the trees need to be, uh, assessed as part of this, uh, to make sure that we're not pouring beautiful stamped concrete over areas where our roots are going to rapidly grow. Once we put in concrete as opposed to a trex decking and there's no water getting through, uh, the roots are going to start seeking water and we might find them lifting our brand new sidewalks there. So again, maybe, maybe, uh, an arborist, uh, could be consulted on the types of trees that are currently there to, to make sure we don't have a problem. And other than that, I think the plan is beautiful and I really want to say thank you to our city staff, uh, for all the work you've put into this and Tatiana, thank you for your wonderful presentation. And I'm looking forward to seeing the final result.
Thank you very much, Peter will definitely make note of your comments and they can be incorporated, absolutely.
David, I see your hand up next.
Thank you, and thank you Tatiana for the, congratulations and for your first, uh, official, presentation in that position. Well done, really, really appreciate it. I just had a few comments or suggestions. One is, if I heard Robert correctly talked about push button for crosswalks or lighted, uh, crosswalks, my recommendation or suggestion, I think we made it to look at for our entire city wherever possible to look at streetlight, uh, touch, touchless center sensors for crosswalks. So people don't have to push, uh, buttons if possible. Um, the other was, and I didn't know if this was one of the ones, it's something I know we've talked about before. I've talked about before, we have a park and ride facility there and a crosswalk right near there. Is that one of the anticipated lighted up, light up crosswalks that we're talking about? If not, I would once again ask that that be one of the ones we use, uh, direct, especially since it's directly, uh, or, or adjacent to our park and ride and is used by individuals we want to come to Old Town and shop. So that would be a recommendation. Um, also, and I didn't read it, it was a little quick, but I, I'm sure it's already there. If we aren't already considering it for all the planters and all the, uh, the in, improvements we're doing, we could consider a lot of drought tolerant plants, especially in light of what California's dealing with right now, uh, would be better for us. And last but not least, I've had a number of individuals who, I guess, purchased or donated and had plaques put in Old Town years and years and years ago, asking if they could, uh, if their plaques were going to be re, re-put in after the fact, if they could get them. So if there's a place they could, uh, or if they should contact you, Tatiana, let me know and, uh, I will put them in touch with you. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Thank you. The plan is to, for our staff, to remove all the plaques prior to construction and we'll have them reinstall. We're not proposing to install them back in the sidewalk. We will be installing them embedding in the con- concrete, precast concrete, uh, bollards and fence and, uh, and probably in the bench. Um, but yes, that's, that's the plan, we will, uh, we will save all of that.
Okay.
And on the light, every crosswalk will get this crossing. We will look into touchless crossing in a certain area with the backup on the. Most of the touchless crossing, most of the city have experienced that they just, uh, because of motion, they keep on going on and off and lose its validity that people are crossing and you need to push the button. But we will look into see what we can do on that aspect. And about the plant and material Heather is involved, she's our landscape maintenance and she will be closely watching and monitoring what we're going to do, not only about the tree roots, as it was mentioned by council member, um, Kraut. And also, as Tatiana mentioned, couple of trees because of that reason are getting relocated, removed and replanned with the trees that the roots are not going to be disturbing the concrete work. But good comments, we will incorporate all of those into our specification prior to advertisement of the project.
Very soon.
Um, Tatiana, congratulations, so well deserved promotion. You've done wonderful work for the city and this is just, uh, an example for the public to see your, your type of work. Um, some of my questions have been answered, I just wanted to clarify that we're not going to be using blue, um, blue shades on the lights on the streets, are we?
No.
Okay. Um, and, and there was at least one photo of grass, we're not planting grass, are we?
No, we're not planting.
Okay. Um, I'm really happy to see the safer crosswalks. And I wonder if, is there anything else we can do to slow the traffic down? I am, i- it's just people that are from out of town that aren't familiar, they still just go so fast. Um, did you consider anything new? Or is there anything we could do to just? Slow it down a little?
With the flashing, um, crosswalks and with better street lighting, it will help. Um, we do work closely with sheriff's department for enforcement of speeding. Uh, again, we will reinstall the sign, we will see if there is a better, more visible location. We do have twenty-five miles per hour signs there. Uh, we will see if we can, uh, maybe make them more visible.
Also, the cobblestone that we're installing, council mayor, you have a good point. We may be able to create a better rumble. There is no residential in there that can be, um, impacted by this, except the one that is closest to El Cannon. But the one closest to Park and Ride and the one at Middle, I believe we can work with the contractor that cobblestone, as you know, originally when we had them, they were pretty good, they can definitely wake you up. We will see what we can do only on the pattern of the traffic to put those in a way that it will become little more than just a smooth transition.
I think that's a great idea, Robert. So anything else you can think of? Cause, uh, you know, every, well, rather frequently we hear from people that, um, that they just don't feel safe, but these crossworks will, will be a great addition too. And I just wanted to echo, um, that my expectation is that we use drought tolerant, maybe, um, and, and the trees native, I mean, we have an opportunity to really make this look like Calabasas used to look and with native plants and, and whatnot. Um, that was it, I can't wait, it's, it's exciting.
Alicia?
All my questions have been asked and answered, so just a congratulations to Tatiana. Definitely a well deserved promotion and I'm really excited about this, I think it'll be great. And, um, I was going to ask also about the touchless, um, crosswalks, but I heard Robert's answer, but maybe we can just explore it one more time, just to see if there's any new technology on that front.
Will do.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anything other than to ask, when, when, when is the estimated time of completion?
It's approximately, uh, six months, uh, it will start at the end of this year. Hopefully we will be done by next summer.
Good, okay. All right, congratulations and thank you. Um, with that, no actions needed on this item.
Correct.
So we'll move on. Um, would you like to take a five minute break, everybody, before we get into the next one?
Thank you.
Council members, would you like to?
Sure.
Okay, five minute break and then we'll go to our last item. See, we have one, two. Soon as Kenan's here, we'll start. But David, I don't know if anyone's here, but. As soon as everyone shows themselves, we'll start. That way I'll know that they're there. Kenan's here now. Kenan's here now. All right. I think we're ready to go. Just give me, let me know. Staff?
I'm good.
Did you say good to go?
Okay, good to go. Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're back from our break. We'll resume. We have item number eleven.
James, one second, please. Sorry. Okay, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Okay, welcome back, everybody. We're starting now with item number eleven, which is introduction of ordinance number twenty-two-one-three-nine-four. I'd like to correct on item eleven A. It says unhoused persons. It should be unhoused with a D, otherwise it has the opposite meaning from what we were trying to convey. So the agenda, it should definitely be changed. Please make that change and post it. It doesn't sound very good the way it reads now. Aside from which, I guess we're going to turn to Michael. Are you giving this report?
Yes, but I think, Kenan, do you have something to say?
Yes, Mayor, council members, if I could lead in and then I'll turn the time over to Matt and, or Michael first and then Matt. Thank you, counsel, for taking the time to consider this item. This, this item comes at the request of our, the city council's task force on homelessness. We've met several times over the last couple of months since my appointment and in that process, we started to discuss and consider ways that the city can best respond to unhoused individuals in our community. And as you're aware, this is a topic that is difficult. As we've gone through this process, we've realized that there are things that we can do much better as a city. And it also is very clear that as we had these discussions, one of the things that probably perhaps most obvious is that we lacked a formal policy that came from the council in regards to homelessness. And so this gives us an opportunity to begin those discussions. The, the, at the request of the task force, what was asked to be presented was a very balanced approach. In essence, what we're trying to do tonight is present a framework. We're not going to be able to provide all of the details now. This gives us a framework of of tools that we can start to use, and then we'll build a policy utilizing these different tools. It is a foundation, and it's one that might be dynamic over time. But I do want to acknowledge that it's, it's, it's an issue that communities throughout the state, throughout the country are wrestling with. There are some things that we've learned in the process, but there's quite a bit that we still have yet to learn. But at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Michael to give an initial presentation on this. And then we'll stop that part and then go into Matt's discussion on, on the ordinance.
Thank you, City Manager Kenton. I'm going to go ahead and screen share here. Just one second. Thank you again, Mayor, and thank you, council members. Tonight, before we get into the discussion, I thought it would be important to list some of the objectives that staff has tonight. First and foremost is the consideration of recommendations from the unhoused persons homeless task force. The two primary recommendations being entering into an agreement to provide interim housing and support services for individuals experiencing homelessness, as well as the adoption of a public right-of-way ordinance. I think it's important to note that the, this initial meeting is to focus on the big picture, strategy, direction, funding, et cetera, with the hopes of returning with an MOU, formal policies, procedures, and implementation steps at a future meeting. As the city manager noted, now, again, to note this, our response to, as of now, is an imperfect ad hoc process that will continue to be revised and improved. And the recommendations presented tonight, we feel are just a few tools of the many we hope to utilize. Getting into the discussion of why this is being brought forward to you today or tonight, you'll see here, I'll point you to the monthly homeless outreach requests that have been received by the City of Calabasas. You'll notice in the beginning of the year, and this is from twenty-twenty-one, the beginning of the year relatively low. It increases significantly into the spring and has plateaued a bit here in the past few months. Staff believes or attributes some of this increase to the potential reopening of the local economy with both unhoused and, and, and just normal shoppers or members of the public being outside. In addition, or combined with the removal of some large encampments in the surrounding areas, which has caused some dispersment of unhoused individuals. So, so of these calls, many impacted access to public right-of-ways. This includes sidewalks, streets, transit stops, and parking lot entrances, to name a few. To address this increased activity, the Unhoused Persons Homeless Task Force convened on March twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-one to study the challenge and discuss possible solutions. The task force ultimately ended up directing staff to research options that allowed the city to both protect the public health, safety, welfare, property and environment of the citizens, and be as compatible and compassionate as possible regarding the protection and preservation of health, safety, and welfare of individuals in the city experiencing homelessness. The Unhoused Persons and Homeless Task Force reconvened on July sixteenth, twenty-twenty-one to review the staff recommendations, ultimately choosing the, the following two-pronged approach to be considered by the city council. The, the first of that approach being entering into an agreement with a local homeless service provider to offer interim housing and other support services to individuals in Calabasas experiencing homelessness and introduce an ordinance to establish the city's ability to prevent individuals from camping, loitering, or blocking the public right-of-way at particular times and locations at or near youth serving facilities, bus stops, critical infrastructure, and wildfire risk areas. After much contact and outreach on some local service providers that would meet the criteria set by the homeless task force, staff is recommending a partnership with the San Fernando Valley Community Mental Health Center. This is a nonprofit organization founded in nineteen-seventy. It's based in Van Nuys. They specialize on improving the mental health of individuals and families with a primary emphasis on individuals with serious emotional disorders and adults and older adults with severe and persistent mental illnesses. They're currently contracted as a service provider by L.A. County Department of Health Services, as well as the State of California. And they were selected recently as a twenty-twenty-one California nonprofit year by Assemblymember Mizarian. So the primary access point for Calabasas constituents would or will be the San Fernando Valley Community Mental Health Center's George Vega Center for Hope, which is located in Van Nuys and, and as you see here. This drop-in center allows homeless individuals with mental health and substance abuse needs to receive immediate and basic healthcare assistance through its various service offerings, some of which you see here in the pictures or in the, in the box outlined in red. Some showers, laundry facilities, lockers, light meals, emergency food bank, clothing, computer lab, conference room, benefit enrollment, ID retrieval, and so on and so forth. Staff visited the site with our, the COGS Outreach Coordinator and was, was quite impressed with the facilities. And this type of center is important because it offers a level of stabilization for an individual, such as obtaining identification or storing personal belongings. And that allows one to focus on some of the next steps on improving their situation, such as enrolling of one of the center's programs or perhaps being linked to other support services. Once the individuals are stabilized and enrolled in one of the San Fernando Valley Community Health Center's programs, individuals can then be placed into short-term temporary housing. This provides onsite services, including case management, substance abuse, and mental health treatment, as well as independent living skills. The facilities provide a safe place for individuals with co-occurring disorders to work with onsite case managers on getting the skills to live independently and successfully placed into a long-term housing program offered by the county and other partners. So getting into, again, the, the goal of this presentation, we're compartmentalizing the service offerings in the first half and followed up by the discussion on the actual ordinance and coming resolutions on the second half. So this concludes the, the general, you know, high altitude overview of what staff is proposing and recommending from the homeless task force. We have the Outreach Coordinator Gabriel Graham from Los Verdes Malibu Council of Governments, as well as Charlie Rubin, Director of Volunteer Services in the Cornerstone Program from the San Fernando Valley Community Mental Health Center, here to answer any questions or provide any clarity on some of these programs so that council can provide direction to staff again on moving forward with a, a proper MOU to be considered at a future meeting date. And so we, if, if we'd like to take the questions now.
Actually, what we're going to do is, I think there are other staff reports, and then we're going to take public comment, and then we're going to hear from, then we're going to ask questions. What did Matt, are you next?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's also okay. I'll ask Michael to keep the slides up. And click to the next slide then.
Okay.
So, as Michael noted, this, the recommendation from the task force is a balanced approach. Services, this is the second part of the balanced approach. Increasing the enforcement tools that are available. So what's the thirty-second background is the city previously had an ordinance that limited camping in most public rights-of-way and most public areas. But the ordinance was dropped in eighteen or nineteen, twenty-eighteen or nineteen, that is, after a Ninth Circuit case came down, which the Court of Appeals held that cities cannot enforce camping prohibitions on individuals who have no other option if they're not provided another option. And as later clarified through other rulings, the rule now is that if a city intends to enforce a camping ban or a sleeping or sitting or lying in public spaces ban, it must do so by first offering the unhoused person an alternative place to sleep, a shelter. And if the shelter is offered and not accepted by the person, then the city can enforce a ban that is in all places and all locations. So the first part of the ordinance before you, section nine-thirty-eight-oh-two-oh, would prohibit camping, sleeping, sitting, lying throughout the city in public spaces, that is, public highways, medians, sidewalks, et cetera. There's a couple of exemptions. Permitted parades, events, expressive activity, that is, First Amendment-protected protests, using a transit bench for up to an hour, and temporarily for persons with disabilities. If somebody needs to, humanity is humanity. If someone needs to sit down, that's okay. This broad prohibition is only enforceable if the city has, at the time of enforcement, when the sheriff's deputy seeks to contact a person and arrests them for violating the ban, if the city has a bed to offer them. And if the person refuses the bed, then and only then can this broad prohibition be enforced, but it does not exist in the current ordinance. So the recommendation is to add it now that there is also proposed to be a services program that would include, should the council approve the MOU, access to beds, meaning that the tool is now viable or will be viable if the council were to approve the services component. The second part of the ordinance, Michael, next slide, please. The second part of the ordinance is enforceable even under the Mars versus Boise case in the absence of shelter bed because it's limited to particular times and places. And here, the proposal is to ban camping, sleeping, sight, sitting on certain portions of the public rights-of-way, and I'll just highlight a couple. The, the rest are in the document, wildfire risk areas. Here, this does not mean the state map very high fire hazard severity zone. That's a land use planning tool that is in the entire city. Here, we're looking at two different state definitions for land that is covered with grass, grain, brush, or forest, where a fire originating there would present an abnormally difficult job of suppression. So what that means is a grassy open space, a grassy hillside, that kind of setting would be a place in which we can still enforce in the right setting, a camping ban even without having a bed for that person at that time. Although, as noted, the recommendation from the task force is to pursue both services and additional enforcement tools. The same for additional locations within ten feet of fire hydrant, driveway, loading dock, bus stop for more than an hour. So monopolizing a bus stop for a day would be prohibited. Simply using a bus stop to wait for the bus would be okay. Within fifty feet of critical infrastructure, as defined by council, one of the additional documents up tonight would be a resolution that would make that definition for critical infrastructure. Next, within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of school routes, and I'll cover that in a moment. We also have a resolution there inside public transit. So riding public transit would be okay, but simply spending the entire day inside one bus, or as we experienced in the past, inside the beach bus, spending your day there would be a problem. And any other public place where the city council has adopted a specific prohibition on it being a place in which camping is not safe. Next slide. So as noted, the proposal is to add an additional enforcement tool. The model is largely of our surrounding cities. And which has had this tool for some time in slightly different form and has had some success with it. In terms of enforcement, if the sheriff comes upon or is called to a situation and a bed is available, then the sheriff deputy can offer, offer the bed to the person. And if they refuse, they could be arrested, although on note, arrest is not automatic. The sheriff's deputies onsite on the scene will retain their existing individual discretion to decide what the right remedy is in that situation. The task force proposal would add an additional tool that does not currently exist, but it does not mandate arrest in all cases. And I note that for, for both sides of folks to be aware of, the adoption of this ordinance is not a panacea. It will not prevent the homeless problem, nor will it result in every unhoused person being arrested. Neither extreme is going to happen. What this will do is give the sheriffs an additional tool that they can use in the right cases in which the triggers that have been discussed are met. And if so, arrest a person who refuses to take advantage of other shelter in the general prohibition or arrest a person who refuses to move from the particular location, school route, fire risk area, if they remain in that particular location. The maximum fine is a thousand dollars. That can be lowered typically to five hundred. And the fine amount is reduced if the person is on public benefits based with a process for reducing or waiving the fine at the city manager's. The next slide, please. This is the proposal for designating critical infrastructure, and this is resolution, draft resolution twenty-one seventeen forty-eight. Critical infrastructure would be government buildings, city hall, the library, fire stations, utility facilities, health facilities, bus stops, transit stops. We don't have any levees, but water sources, the creek, and the bridges over the one-on-one that are critical evacuation routes. Next slide. Also implementing the specific times and places component of the resolution, the additional proposed resolution would designate school routes. And the streets are listed there. And we'll click through the maps. Oh, no, for those in the public, these are not very big, but this is available on the city's website. Both the list and the mapping. A Wright, Bay Laurel, Lupin Hill, and then the high school, the elementary school, Chapparol, and AC Stella Middle School. Each of those has routes designated for what would be a school route, and then this would prohibit camping, sleeping, et cetera, within two-hundred-and-fifty feet of those routes, should the council choose to adopt it. Next slide, please. And this is the end of the staff presentation. I'm going to make a closing comment on the legal side, and then I'll turn it back to the city manager and Mr. McConville for their closing comments, and then back to council. My closing comment is, on the legal side, as noted, what's proposed from the task force is an ordinance that would provide an additional tool or set of tools for the sheriffs to use on the legal end for enforcement. I, I want to emphasize it's not going to be a panacea. The homeless problem is multifaceted, and resolution of it does not come from a single document, nor even a single tool, but it will add a tool that we do not currently have. The strength of that tool will depend on whether we do or do not have a bed available. The strength of that tool will depend on whether we do or do not have a bed available, hence the task force recommendation is to uh increase them. Ensure that the beds will be available so that the choice offered to persons who are unhoused is real. It is um services and a bed or else enforcement. Uh, the choice will remain with each individual sheriff's deputy at the time something arises. Uh, the other point to note is that there are some additional options that the task force. Uh, did not recommend, but uh could be started for studied further by the council. And these include, in addition to contracting for beds, to look at creating a safe parking lot. Uh, there are a number of cities that provide safe parking lot programs, most uh most well-developed is Santa Barbara. Uh, in the central coast, but so too several in LA County, including Los Angeles and Long Beach. And a safe parking lot provides an additional safe place for folks to be, and again, can create that that um uh viable option. Or to look at creating a shelter program within the city rather than just contracting for it. Some additional options to consider. With that, I will turn it back to the city manager, and then, of course, I'm available for questions uh at my time. Thank you.
All right, sorry to interrupt. There's some background noise coming. I don't know if it's papers or something.
I think someone's brushing up against the microphone.
Okay, just I'm, yeah, a bunch of people are noticing, so I just.
Yeah, if people could mute their mics, please.
Okay, Kenden, um, are you next?
Yeah, thank you, counsel. Um, uh, Michael, um, Matt, um, wonderful insight and preparation for this again. A- as we mentioned at the beginning, this is uh and begins the discussion. Create some tools that we're proposing to the council to create the the framework. As the council is aware, this is a growing problem in the in the state of California and especially in LA County. Uh, I think at last count, the 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 number of unhoused individuals in LA County. Exceeds the population of 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 Calabasas by about three times. So if you think about it in that context, it's three cities the size of Calabasas uh uh that are unhoused individuals. And this problem is going to in- increase. Uh, staff, it was able to participate in a meeting just this last week. And um, one of the things that was noted, and and we don't know the 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 full extent of this, but uh. Uh, one group is starting to see a higher number of uh individuals from out of state who are coming to California. In fact, um, uh, at one point, it it was uh under understood that, you know, about forty percent of the population. Of individuals who are were are who are unhoused uh were from out of state. Uh, some figures say that might be as high as anywhere from eighty to ninety percent now of the folks that are coming from out of state. Uh, and again, that's uh, you know, uh, looking into that, but we see that this will continue to increase. Uh, our goal is to provide counsel this opportunity to now create a policy. Uh, with the understanding that this policy will change over time. Now, uh, also, um. The policy will be determined to a certain extent by the resources available, meaning what uh what funds are available and what we can do with those funds. Uh, we do have, as was mentioned at our June meeting on stimulus. We do have some monies available through the stimulus uh allocations that would allow us to help with mental health. And substance abuse, so this would fall into those categories. But again, any other uh programming or services. Uh, if not grant funded, would fall on the general fund. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Matt, I'm sorry, to Michael. Uh, to look at those next steps and then mayor and council will um.
And we'll take public comment.
Yeah, thank. Yep.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry, you you froze a little bit.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, so so these are some of the next steps that us.
Michael, there's something wrong with your connection. We we can't hear you, Michael.
And and Mayor, let me just step in while Mike, Michael's working on his connection and and you can see on his screen those next steps. Uh, again, we're we're looking for direction on the service programs, uh, service and program offerings. Uh, next meeting or meetings, uh, review the memorandum of understanding. Uh, and then potentially adopt the ordinance. And then future meetings, we'd also like um direction to the task force. And also then looking at uh specific policies or procedures and how how we're going to specifically implement what we're trying to accomplish. Um, staff is partnering with uh the center and other local agencies uh based on conversations. That we've had with over the last couple of weeks, we realize that there are a number of resources out there, a number of agencies. Both nonprofit and county entities uh that we can uh further consult with. Some of those are listed here, um, including Prince of Peace um uh in Woodland Hills. And also Rabbi Julia here in Calabasas, who has done some extensive work with the homeless and uh unhoused individuals.
All right, well, let's, Michael, are you, are you? Ready?
Yeah, that that concludes my, again, we're standing by and waiting uh direction and put it this time.
Okay, so let me turn to public comment. Mari, does anyone called in?
We have no calls, Mr. Mayor, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, and I don't see, I see one hand.
Okay, so now is the time for public comment. If anybody wishes to speak three minutes or less, you please raise your hand. Cause I'm, when we're done with these three, I'm gonna close the public comment. First up is Christina Chapman. If you could come into the room and then give your name and uh. I'm I'm just reading the name that's written on here on, you know, on the on the list here and uh. Your city of residence. Go ahead, Christina.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Yep, so I am Christina Chapman and I reside in Calabasas. Um, so I don't, I don't have a lot to say, but I do find it important that I I want to make sure that I mention as this goes forward that. Um, great job on putting together um potential options for mental health and substance abuse. My concern is that especially with unemployment and financial hardship, I do believe the unhoused population is going to grow. Does does this bed option really assist people that are just having financial hardship as well? Or can we help people in this proposal that are just really experiencing financial hardship? Without having them suffer a fine or have to go to serve jail time. So. I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that. I do love the option of contracting beds. And I also love the concept of the safe parking lot program. So I just wanted to to put my two cents in there for consideration. I thank you for your time.
Okay, and to the extent there's any questions, um, they can be answered at the very end when we're done with public comments, so stay tuned. Um, next individual to bring in is Suzanne Scranton. Suzanne? Yes.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, again, my name is Suzanne Scranton, and I live in the Bird Street area of Calabasas. As the head of our local neighborhood watch, I am intimately familiar with the crime statistics for our community. And the increased presence of homeless persons coming into our community over the last year. I've been personally involved in working with council members to communicate when homeless people have entered into our community. So that the sheriff and the city's social worker can be activated. For the safety and security of our community, I believe that it is imperative. That we continue to assess the needs of the homeless that descend upon our community and then transfer them to the appropriate facility. Be it home to their families, a hospital, a psychiatric facility, a substance abuse facility. Or into sheriff custody if deemed appropriate. We must remain vigilant in identifying, assessing and rectifying each homeless situation. Or our community could be overrun with homeless persons like what is occurring in West Holes. Or down by the bowling alley on Ventura Boulevard. Therefore, I strongly support the proposed M O U. And the proposed ordinances, and I ask that the council approve them as soon as possible. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you. Um, last hand I see up is Marissa Feinstein. Uh, please, if you wish to speak, please raise your hand because I am gonna close the public hearing in just a moment.
Good evening, I hope that you can hear me. Uh, this is Marissa Feinstein. I am a resident of Calabasas. I am also the Greater Mulwood Neighborhood Watch Coordinator. And I thank you all very much for everything you do on a daily basis. I support every effort that I heard this evening to keep our cities uh safe. I support the new tools that I've heard about and the ordinances. I would like to share with you some of my personal experiences with some of the unhoused. And in addition to Ms. Scranton, I regularly communicate safety issues in the community. But I am concerned about the growing unhoused that my family and I have witnessed. Uh, one of the incidences is I was wake, I was awakened by one of my daughters. Who heard a man outside of our home screaming profanities. And we looked out the window and there was an unhoused individual. Uh, screaming uh erratically waving his arms about and dressing his clothes. While eating his food and throwing his trash on our property. I did immediately call the sheriff and after about thirty minutes, the individual. Went along the way on the highway, the sheriff didn't make it quite in time, and I don't know what happened. I'm grateful that we're safe and I am very concerned about what happened to that man. We also regularly see um a homeless individual who comes into the area on a bicycle and a scooter. I photograph him whenever I can. He enters a no trespassing area across from Calabasas High School quite regularly. And he comes with his belongings, sometimes without his belongings, and I'm very concerned that it's not only near the school. But of fire hazards. And I just again, I realize this is not an easy fix and it is multifaceted. I thank you all and whatever you can do to keep our city safe and to ensure that this problem does not worsen. Uh, is greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marissa. Um, I see no other public comments. No one's called in, correct, Mari?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. We have no answer or no one.
All right, so I'm gonna close the public. Uh, comment portion. I did see joining us was Deputy Mason de Mateo. I anticipate if he's willing to come into the room, that would be helpful because I anticipate there may be some questions which he might be able to contribute to. Um, can you ask him and see?
We we can bring him in, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right, and there's Mason. All right. Thank you uh for joining us, Deputy de Mateo. Um. I did any uh to any of the staff or to Gabriel Graham, Charlie Rubin or Deputy Mateo, was there anything said? By the speakers that you wish to address or comment on? I know there were a couple of questions asked. I don't know if they were. Rhetorical or they needed an answer, but anything you want to add at this time would be appropriate. Nothing, okay. Um, then we'll turn to the council. Who would like to go first?
Can we hear from our task force members? I I would.
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. Uh, so Alicia and Peter were on the task force. That's a good idea. I I do forget about those things occasionally. Peter, I see your hand up anyways, and then Alicia, you'll be next.
Peter? Oh, great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, staff, for that presentation and for everybody else who participated. Uh, thank you to our city attorney for his insight as well. Um, I want to start with two quick questions if I could. Um, one is the school routes. Uh, that are identified on those maps. Some of those streets are pretty obvious. Some of them are. A portion of the residential streets that are a little less obvious. What logic was used in identifying those?
So generally, the logic was the routes that uh staff in conversation with. The planning staff and public work staff were aware, were regularly used for accessing those schools. Um, I did not put the map together, so if we have questions on particular pieces of it. I'll defer that back to the uh public work staff who put the map together. But that was the general logic behind it.
Okay, I just think a second look at those because uh some of them have identified portions of residential. Side streets and others that I would say are very similar on the opposite side of a street aren't identified, so. Uh, if we could take a second look at those before we come back to us with those. The second question I had was for Michael on uh on our service provider here. Uh, could you tell us a little bit about the difference between a? A Lhasa uh service provider and a non-Lhasa service provider and the one that we're looking at and and why?
Well, um, Char- Charlie, maybe I'll let you jump in a little bit. Um, are you're, you don't provide any services by loss, is that true?
Well, actually, we 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 have housing uh services that are contracted, so kind of in Michael's slide, so we we're. We're we're a nonprofit, we've been around for uh fifty years. We celebrated that last year. Uh, we provide all kinds of services, so Michael and Gabriel actually came out to our access point. So we are contracted with many different uh fed, uh, city, county, state and federal government. Uh, so we do have a contract with Lhasa and one of the uh. One of the constituents that brought up, we actually have, we have a contract with Department of Rehab. And with that, we have a Valley Employment Services that uh helps individuals get back on their feet, helps them with resume writing, looking for. For jobs, so we we kind of all encompass uh everything, you know, and. I I know it was brought up, uh, I don't know which individual brought it up, but uh. The mental health services and substance use services that we would be able to provide for uh the homeless folks that are. Either in Calabasas or part of the cog, uh, that would be no cost because we're we're funded for that. So I don't know if that answers the question. I'd be happy to take other questions from you all as well.
That does answer my question and thank you for that. Um, as far as comments, I'd like to just uh, if I can start from the beginning, um. Want to share with the public and and with my fellow council members that. You know, history has been long in the making here. Uh, in nineteen sixty-seven, the uh, the LPS Act. Uh, made it illegal for us to incarcerate somebody for mental health uh against their will. Um, and it it got very complicated after that. Um. So we do have a number of uh of individuals experiencing homelessness that fall under the mentally ill category. Uh, the last statistics in twenty twenty show that that's about twenty-five percent of the homeless. Um. We also have uh people that are experiencing substance abuse uh issues, addiction, alcoholism. And uh and that constitutes another quarter, about twenty-seven percent of the homeless, again, according to the twenty twenty Lhasa survey. Um. And yeah, and I I just want to bring up those numbers to remind us that, you know, as we're looking at helping. Prevent camping and encampments uh from occurring on city streets, the city sidewalks. In our hills, creating a fire hazard. All of these are very important uh in in uh. Uh, you know, necessary steps that the city has to take to to protect our city. But we also have to look at this from a compassionate standpoint. Uh, and I want to thank uh the mayor for mentioning Rabbi Julia Weiss. She's done some amazing work. She is part of congregation Orme, which is part of our Calabasas. Community. Um, you know, compassion is the first thing we have to have. We have to be able to get out there and help the people that need help first. Uh, the idea that most of the homeless are homeless by choice uh is is incorrect. And um, and we need to get get an understanding that if we, if we just chase people out of the city of Calabasas. That does not solve homelessness. Uh, it just moves them from one community to another. Why am I talking about all of this? Well, um, the LA County Host Team that we met with last week. Um, which uh is part of the Sheriff's Department and their task is to get into the hills. And uh and provide outreach services for the homeless. Uh, to help them get the services that they need and then and only then if they've offered the services and have they've been turned down. Only then are the individuals removed from the area. Um. We need to take the same approach. Uh, LA County has had zero injunctions against the county sheriffs. Uh, LA City has not been so fortunate because LA City has taken a heavier hand that has. Potentially violated civil rights, and we don't want to fall into that category. Um. So from a compassionate standpoint, we need to get out there and help the homeless from keeping the city out of liability. We need to get out there and help the homeless. So I am certainly in favor of uh the the no camping ordinance and the other issues that we brought forth here. But I cannot support them unless we have the services portion. Defined and agreed to at the same time. Uh, I was a little concerned with the way that this item showed up on the agenda. On the agenda, it says provide direction to staff and consider entering into an agreement. Where is the uh? Whereas the, uh. Uh, adopting the resolution on the camping ban seemed a little bit more like we were ready to pull the trigger on that, and I think we've got it backwards. I think we need to be ready to, we need to pull the trigger on the services portion. As we enact laws that allow us to enforce. Moving people along, we need to fix the homeless problem. Uh, not just kick it down the road. Um, I, I also, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna go for just another minute if I can, if you'll indulge me. Um, on the west side of Calabasas, uh, I was walking this last weekend and I noticed that on a lot of the. Bus stop benches and park benches, somebody has screwed four by fours into the benches. Obviously to stop somebody from laying down on the bench and sleeping there. I understand the rationale behind that, I don't know if that was the city or if that was some other individual, but they are really rough cut four by fours with. Wood deck screws just screwed right into the benches and I, I'd ask our city staff to take a look at that. And if that was done by us, it needs to be done a little bit cleaner, uh, and we need to figure out who. Directed our staff to do that. And if that wasn't done by us, we need to get that fixed. The last thing that really hit me as I read this, the, uh, the staff report. Was the number of homeless outreach requests that we have and for those in the public here. Uh, we have, uh, a couple of easy ways to let us know when you encounter somebody that is experiencing homelessness. Uh, we have our website, you can report it there, we also have the Connect Calabasas app and you can report it on that. When that happens, our policy is that our staff. Reaches out to Secure All who assesses the situation. And the, 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 the draft policy that we've been looking at says that they reach out, that the Secure All then calls. Either our outreach coordinator or our sheriff and my concern is. The homeless outreach requests in April were eleven, in May were twenty-five, in June were thirteen, and in the beginning of July were ten calls. But when I look at Gabriel's report on his actual outreach experience. Uh, he's only getting a very small fraction of these. Uh, so I think we're losing something in the way that we're handling these and I'm gonna ask my fellow council members to. To help us look hard at this, uh, draft policy on homeless outreach. Again, um, I am totally in favor of the camping ban, I am totally in favor of enforcement of these issues. Uh, but I do need to see a balanced approach where we provide the services and the outreach. Successfully by trained individuals who can help people that need help get help. And if we satisfy that half, I will wholeheartedly support the second half. And with that, I will turn it over to, uh. My fellow council member Alicia Weintraub.
Thanks Peter, um, and first I want to thank Michael and Matt and Kendon for all the work on this and. Deputy De Mateo and AJ and, um, Gabriel. This is a huge team effort and everyone has played a role in this. I just want to back up for the community, also want to thank all the residents who, um, emailed us correspondence in support of this measure. Even though there were only a few people calling in, we did receive a handful of, um, resident correspondence in support of these initiatives. So I want to bring up probably about. I don't know, shortly after I was elected in two thousand and fifteen, this really became. The most important issue to me, I've lived in the greater LA area my entire life. Minus a year in DC, but with that, my entire life and I. Slowly started seeing the situation change in Woodland Hills, our neighboring community, and I started bringing it up at the cog. Saying, you know, we really need to pay attention to this because what happens in Woodland Hills will impact Calabasas, Agora, Hidden Hills. And so on, and I was met with some resistance, you know, thinking that we live in a bubble, which we obviously know is not true. Fast forward, um, everything we started seeing in our adjacent communities started happening in Calabasas. And, um. The calls started coming in, I want to say. Probably on a daily basis, I received calls from residents about unhoused individuals in our community. And these people are first concerned about these individuals. And then also concerned about public safety because the. Situations that are happening in Calabasas have led. Parents to call and say, is it safe for my child to come to school when there's people sleeping on Mulholland Highway? Or blocking a driveway, um, off Parkway, Calabasas. Those are questions that people should not have to ask, is it safe for my child to walk to school? Someone using a wheelchair or a walker should not have to be fearful of walking on our public streets. What we've presented here tonight is a very balanced approach. But what I want to just back up real quick is up until this point. We have had compassion from our sheriff. We've had compassion from, um, Secure All and we've had compassion from Gabriel. Peter brought up a question, why in Gabriel's report, there might be. Less number than is reported, sometimes when I get a call from a resident. I'll tell the resident, you know, that's a public danger, if someone is. High on drugs or running in the middle of the street, that's a call that goes directly to Lost Hills, that's really not a Gabriel issue, so there's different. There's different, just like everyone's a different, obviously, everyone's a different person, so every situation is different and the way those calls get forwarded. Some straight to Secure All, some, you know, um, have been escalated to the sheriff, so that's why sometimes the numbers are different. But they're really, to me, the fact that we're addressing this before the situation gets out of control. Is something that we should be proud of, I think this is a balanced approach, we're caring about safety and security, but we're helping people along the way. And that was something that was brought up at a meeting that. We had last week, but we have a real fire danger here, we can't have people camping. In our hillsides, we cannot have people abusing drugs and public defecation. We have to keep public safety a priority and trust me, I care. I care about people and want to see people get help, I mean, every time a call goes in, I always want to know the people's story, you know. Were they able to get help, there have been family reunifications that have been done through the sheriff. We've been able to get people the medical assistance that they need, so. But I'm telling you that I'm spending. Every day receiving calls from residents on this and we have to do something about it. You'd look right outside our city boundaries by the Bolero and Woodland Hills. And that is just unacceptable, it's unacceptable that these people are allowed to live. In such conditions, that is not healthy for any human being, we would not let animals live like that. And the fact that people just two miles away are allowed to live like that, that is just unacceptable to me. The fact that we're able to partner with a service provider to get people help and also maintain public safety where necessary. And most important, get people the help that they need, it is out there and it is available and we're taking that step, but. The situation has happened in Calabasas, I want to see it addressed, there's amazing resources out there, but some of the situations. I'm not going to go into detail on every single call, but people should not have to be afraid to walk into their work at the commons. Because someone is, you know, high on drugs or someone's having a lunch and witnessing a situation. Or parents sending their children for lunch at Gelson's after school and getting calls of hysterics because of. A situation with an unhoused individual, these are happening in our community and we have to address it. Um, so I'm a hundred percent in support, I want to see us act quickly before it gets even, um. Before the situation grows even more, so thank you to everyone for hearing me out.
Thank you, um, we have other council members, David, I see your hand up.
Thank you, I just wanted to say first of all, thank you to staff and the task force. Uh, for all the hard work put in here, this is, uh, really important. Um, it's been important for a while, as Alicia said, I. Personally also get, I'd say five days a week at least have contact directly or emails, calls, texts. Uh, most times I'll send those emails, calls and texts on to Alicia AJ. Uh, depending on the, the, the issue. Um, or just talk to the individual directly. This is something that is serious, it is. And, and it has, has been mentioned, there are many letters of support we've all received. Uh, the entire council for this particular methodology we're. Considering tonight. And while. We are a small city with, according to the numbers, not a huge. Issue of unhoused individuals, we do have issues and it is really. Important and imperative upon us to start to make a difference, it is everyone's issue. And as has been said, it doesn't matter if it's a neighboring city, a neighboring state, as has been mentioned. It doesn't matter, it's an issue that we need to act on and I'm very proud that we are. Taking these steps to move forward. Um, it's about. To me, safety for all our residents, including the unhoused individuals, health, including mental health, so important. And all wraparound services are necessary, not just a bed, and that's why this. This, uh, San, the San Fernando. Valley Community Mental Health Facility looks like a really good fit, I had a couple of questions if I could ask, I was gonna start with Gabriel. Uh, uh, who does a wonderful job, I know. Um, do you have familiarity with the San Fernando facility and have you worked with them before?
I just, I went in and did a tour, uh, Mike, Michael and myself. One of my other positions, they had an outreach team, um, come to Hope of the Valley and outreach there, so. I'm not extensively, but I, I was very impressed with what I saw in their, in their day center.
Okay, thank you, and then the other question, I guess that'd be for staff or whomever, how, how would the transportation? To the facility take place, what do we have in place or what is the thought process for that?
At, at this time, that's undetermined, we, we are working on that, yeah.
Okay, uh, that's important, and the routes that were, were drawn up. Would those only apply to public schools or would they also apply to private schools in our city?
As currently drawn up, it would be the public schools. Uh, the council could, if directed, expand it to the private case of public schools. We, we had, uh, drawn it up with the public schools.
And what was the rationale for only the public schools opposed to the private? Schools, if, if the focus is safety of, uh, schoolchildren, I presume?
When, when I asked, uh, Public Works that question, they stated that, uh, viewpoint didn't really have much. Pedestrian traffic and so they didn't think that would, uh, qualify as a school route. If that's the school you're referring to.
No, I was, actually there are preschools and other private schools in our community as well.
Yeah, yeah, the, um, yeah, I, again, I, I asked the same question, but if we're tightening up. Um, and this, the school routes with, in regards to Councilmember Kraut's comments, I'll get you an answer for that as well.
Okay, thank you, and again, thank you for the, the great work, I am very much in support of the. Approach and agree with my colleague, uh, colleagues, I believe I've heard that. In order to pursue something like this, uh, and, and move forward, we do have to have. A plan in place, uh, not just for beds but for wraparound services and mental health. And rehabilitation and so many other opportunities, so I, a- as long as we are doing a two-pronged approach, I'm very supportive. And I would consider, uh, depending on the location, looking at safe parking lots as well. As a potential option down the road as well. Those are my comments, thank you.
Okay, Mary Sue?
Yes, thank you, um, I want to first off thank, uh, staff and my two colleagues, Councilmember Weintraub and Councilmember Kraut. For your work on this and all the. Residents that contacted us, um, I have a slightly different. Perspective that I'll share, although I agree with everything I've heard, um, I have a severely mentally ill son who became unhoused. Um, and the journey of finding him. And then going through the LPS conservatorship process for the one-year conservatorship, which is extended each year. Is complex and lengthy. And each time I see a homeless person, I. Think about their family and. How easy it is to lose track, so I, um, so. Grateful to hear each one of my colleagues say that they are fully committed to. Providing compassion and services, so, um, I wanted to start with, um. A couple of things, I, uh, Councilmember Kraut said that he couldn't support. The camping ordinance without strong services in place and, and I agree, they go hand in hand and right now I'm. I'm having some challenges seeing how they go hand in hand and I know that'll be probably staff's greatest undertaking. Because right now. And correct me, um, Michael, if, if I'm incorrect, a call comes in from a resident. Who sees an unhoused person and, and feels some concern. That goes to you, Michael, and then you alert our private security firm. Uh, Secure All. Who then goes and makes the first contact with. The unhoused person, am I correct so far?
Yes.
Okay, and. Um, from there. Uh, and, and they're armed and they're in uniform and, and actually, I, I have a question for. The San Fernando Valley, uh, guest, uh, Mr. Rubin, is. Is that the best? First response? For someone who is severely ill and unhoused? Or can that create? Fear? I just, I want your, um, your input on that, I'm not a subject matter expert.
Sorry, are you referring to? The, the armed part or?
I'm asking, yeah, yeah, I'm asking Mr. Rubin if he'll weigh in on. What we're, how we're doing so far, I'm hoping that he'll help us. Get the most successful outcomes of our contacts, so. Is he available?
Yes, I, I, I was waiting for you to finish. You, you know, to be honest with you, uh, just talking to Gabriel, uh, I, I really feel Gabriel would be that best point. A lot of folks, and I, I believe it was you saying that, uh. Your, your son has mental illness, there, there's a lot of, um, paranoia, whether it's schizophrenia, bipolar. Um, if, you know, what we see is, you know, a lot of substance use meth being the, the drug of choice. Uh, really somebody in uniform, they're more paranoid of that. Um, with, with our center, uh, we, we've got a lot of. Big names on our board of directors, if y'all remember, Councilmember Dennis Zine, he's our, our chair, we actually have. Uh, the, the L, the San Fernando Valley Chief, uh, LAPD on our board as well as the Fire Department. We, we're, we have a lot of coordinated with, with lots of legislators and kind of exactly what you're asking is what we're. Even working out with Bob Blumenfeld's office, we had a meeting with him today, we're, we're trying to pilot stuff to. Help reduce the, the homelessness and reduce the, uh. You know, the folks that had, trying to get the folks that have mental illness and substance use into services and even trying to pilot. Something with LAPD where we would have our clinicians go out on a call with LAPD, but they would be the first. Contact and of course that's a non-uniform, so. You know, it, it.
Yeah, thank you, um, that, that's helpful because for me, knowing with my experience with the mentally ill also. Um. That. That isn't. Probably the best first approach, but that's something we can look at and your expertise will help us. Um, the second question as we, through someone being unhoused is. After the initial contact, they're given a card with services and explained their options. Um, I don't believe, and Michael, can you correct me, does Secure All provide transportation to any service locations?
No.
No, okay, does the sheriff?
No.
Okay.
Sheriff's here, why don't we ask him?
Oh, okay. Yes.
Hey ma'am, good evening, uh, that's a great question, um. When I come into contact with an individual experiencing homelessness, my experiences and contacts in Calabasas have been overwhelmingly positive. We do take a compassion approach, uh, where we try and get to know the individual first. Find out what they're all about and what they're experiencing and what they're going through. And with that, once we develop a relationship, we do offer services and, um. We don't officially, um, have a service that transports individuals to specific areas, however. If I'm available and someone requests to go to a specific place. Such as a shelter or a church or a, uh, center, I'm more than willing to drive them to that place anywhere in the county.
Okay. And your interactions, when you talk developing that trust and that relationship, are you talking about a single encounter? Or are you talking over maybe multiple days, kind of gaining their trust?
Oh, multiple days. I've had several, several encounters, um, recently, um, where the initial contact was just to introduce myself, get to know this individual, where they're coming from, um, why they're here and what they're all about. I also try and determine if this individual's experiencing, um, mental, uh, health issues. If I see that, that is, um, a case, I do reach out to our mental health team, um, which is, uh, we have a clinician and a deputy. Um, I just want to let you know that the clinician is in plainclothes and the deputy with them isn't in the traditional uniform. They're in a black T-shirt, they're in pants, um, their firearm isn't visible. They wear their shirt over their gun, so they're not, um, they're not approaching the individual in a threatening manner. So, um, we do have a lot of resources and the majority of the contacts I've had in Calabasas have been overwhelmingly positive.
Well, no doubt it's your kindness too. But I think you've struck something that maybe a secure all doesn't need to be in uniform on. So that's something I'd like staff to, to look at and learn. So already we've identified, maybe the first responders might create some hesitation. We don't have reliable transportation. One of the speakers referred to a city social worker, and I just want to correct, we don't have a social worker. We, um, that might be something we consider. And, and council member Weintraub, the amount of time I know you've been spending is really, should be done by a staff person or a clinician or somebody. That's, I, I mean, your work has been amazing, but we need, that needs to, I think, shift as well. Um, I just have a couple more questions, but already the fact that it takes, and I knew this, it takes multiple times, and I think Mr. Rubin, you knew this and Gabriel, it takes multiple connections. Gabriel, you taught me that through your experiences. So our ordinance, which says, if you don't leave or if you don't accept services that first time, you will, you could be arrested. And maybe it should say after multiple contacts, if you don't accept services or after, you know, it, it, because I think we all know that one contact is probably not sufficient. Um, the other couple of thoughts I have is, um, someone, a speaker had a great idea about short-term financial impacted people that may have lost their housing. And I'm very, very concerned about the end of the, um, the eviction moratorium and the, um, the supplements to rent. And that, um, Matt, I talked to you, that looks like that's coming to our area, the state of California, September, October. And we may see more families. Um, and I'd like staff to, uh, get in touch with the Rotary Club of Calabasas. We fund a neighbors in need program. They can provide bridge funds to get them back into their, um, their apartment, to get their phone turned on, to get their, you know, their flat tire fixed, things like that, that can get them, uh, job interviews or showing up for jobs. So I thought, I thought that was a terrific suggestion. And as far as, um, the, um, families that could very well possibly become unhoused and would likely want to keep their children in school in our area, I would like us to look at a family, um, safe parking area. I've heard a couple of my colleagues agree to that. I've heard a couple of the residents who spoke as well. Um, we have the Agoura Hills Community Center Parking Lot right now. It's adjacent to the sheriff's station. And so, um, to wrap it up, um, Mr. Rubin, just two more questions for you, if you don't mind. How many housing units do you have? It sounded by the description, they first must come to your center and get some basic, um, some assessment and some basic, uh, services. And then they're moved into housing. Is that correct?
Yes, so we have an access center for Spa Two in, uh, Calabasas Falls within Spa Two. We are the main access point. So kind of one of your points that the Rotary helps out with, we actually have a person, uh, that's a problem solver. So that problem solver could help, you know, if somebody was just become homeless and needs some money to, you know, help with that first month's rent or security deposit, we could do that. If it's, you know, reuniting them with, uh, a loved one out of state, we could, we could provide that as well. So a lot of the resources that you're looking to do, we can also provide that as well. And I, I kind of text Michael earlier, uh, um, and maybe I'll email Michael and you can have a little bit more information. We actually have, um, Valley Employment Services, I think I mentioned it before, that helps, helps folks get jobs as well. But, you know, we're, we're kind of all encompassed.
Yes, how many beds do you have right now? Permanent beds and how many available just today, a random day?
Um, currently with, with COVID, we're, we're kind of only putting one person in a room. So I, I would say currently I have 50 beds.
And how many vacant beds of the 50?
Oh, well, that's, I have 50 vacant beds. Uh, we, we house over 200 people, some, you know, some are, some are a little bit longer term. So it's kind of different, kind of on maybe what we, we all or y'all can call maybe a pilot to try this out. Generally, the people that we have in our interim housing, um, they're generally there for, uh, a year and a half with COVID, we've extended that time, but that's internal for folks that are already receiving services from our center. So with Gabriel's help, because he has a good keen eye on the clients, we'd want to put somebody in there that, you know, we feel that could be successful. And, you know, we have a full set of team between case managers and clinicians that, you know, and the substance use team, that's a separate program that would be kind of, uh, I don't remember if we, one of the council members saying kind of that wraparound services, so.
Right.
Not going to be successful just putting them into a unit on their own.
Well, it's, it's really inspiring to hear about all the work you do and the success you've had. And so to wrap up my comments, I'll just kind of summarize some of the areas that I think we need to look at closely so that they go hand in hand with the new ordinance. I think the penalty is, is too high. People don't have money. Um, I think that a single visit of saying, if you don't accept services, you're subject to arrest is too punitive. I think we need to look at, um, at, you know, the, the caseworker who's ever working on that. Um, I think that we need to look at transportation, who's transporting? We need to look at what kind of first response we're giving and the disconnect between the first responder, SecureAll getting to the unhoused in a quick manner, and Gabriel being in the field, getting there and the person has been moved on, as was written in a report recently, moved on. I want to look at, uh, families, a family safe parking area in anticipation of the moratorium on evictions lifting. And, um, the Rotary Club of Calabasas as a, as a partner as well. Thank you.
Um, I have a few comments. I've been thinking about how to approach this. So if I'm understanding correctly, the ordinance is ready tonight for our first reading, but there's no contract ready.
That's correct.
Okay. So what I would suggest to the council is this, that we consider the ordinance, whether as is or with amendments, and approve the first reading tonight. Then bring back the ordinance with the contract, which only needs one reading, so that it concurrently goes into effect at the same time. Because if you wait for a contract to approve the ordinance for the first reading, then you're delaying for a second reading of the ordinance. And then, what is it, 90 days? 60 days?
30.
30 days. So that takes us quite far into the year. The better approach would be to approve the first reading tonight, which has no effect other than the first reading. And then we approve the, both of them together next time. Whenever next time is, whenever the contract's ready, the ordinance wouldn't be put back out for a second reading. I assume, uh, Matthew, that that would be okay to do?
Yes, that is legal. An ordinance has to be adopted at a regular meeting. So I would come back at the next available regular meeting, once the contract is ready, if that were the council's choice.
Well, if the count, if the contract's not ready for the next regular meeting, then it's going to be a while because we have no, no regular meeting in September. So it's either going to be the contract and the ordinance come back in two weeks, or it waits till October. And then 30 days beyond that for the, for the, uh, for the ordinance.
So that contract could change what's in our ordinance. I almost think that we need to wait a beat and let them both evolve together.
Well, it could, but if it doesn't, then we have no first reading done, then we're still two steps behind. The worst that would happen is if the contract changes what the ordinance would have, we would change the ordinance and then we'd have to have another second reading. But we don't lose anything from that. So I, I heard that, that, uh, a sentiment, I think from a majority, that you want the two together. But I don't want to waste too much time and have months and months go by with no action.
This is complex and there's a lot.
It's not that complex because we don't have the contract in front of us.
I would, I would support what you proposed. I don't want.
The other thing is, Mary Sue, you mentioned a number of different, uh, things you want, you want. But now would be the time to do it. And if you do it, if you wait till next time, it's going to take two more readings. And a couple of you others mentioned.
You know what? I've been asking for, uh, a homeless policy for a year. I've been asking what our city's been doing. And I have, this is the first time that I have heard the scope of what we've been doing. Um, and I think, you know, I, 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 I do have a, the, the one recommended change to the ordinance and, 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 I mean, I, as.
I'm not, I'm not downgrading your changes. I'm just simply saying, if we don't do it tonight, the earliest we could get this ordinance into effect would be three months from now. That's three more months of problems with no services, with nothing. I, I mean, I, I don't really think it helps anyone to wait that long.
No, I don't either, but I think they should move simultaneously and, and.
It will. I outlined how they will.
Okay.
I, the ordinance does not go into effect, at least I won't put it on the agenda until the contract's ready. David, is your hand up?
Yes, I just wanted to say I support the concept of moving forward with the ordinance and bringing back the contract and, and add a second reading at the same time.
Okay, a couple of you had amendments. Peter, I see your hand up now.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I also support making amendments to this as needed tonight and, and approving the first reading of the ordinance. But like Mary Sue, I will not support the second vote on this unless there is all of our services figured out and included in the vote. And I, I don't know how that sits with my fellow council members, but I just don't want to put it on the spot next time.
It, it's just what I said, uh, it, but I don't want to wait. So the amendments, a few of you had, now would be the time, if you could go through them and look at the sections, and we'll have a discussion about what it is you wish to, to amend.
Matt, can you, um, bring us to the section regarding, it's under penalty, I believe?
Can you say the page number?
Yeah, or the section.
That'd be page seven.
Yeah.
Of attachment, uh, A, uh, which is the top section, nine thirty eight oh four oh, summary abatement. And then below nine thirty eight oh five oh penalty, the council can certainly set a lower maximum penalty. It's proposed at a thousand. You could, um, cut that to 500. On note, imprisonment is listed, but is unlikely, given certain realities with the district attorney. Um, you could also delete the imprisonment option and make it, uh, just an infraction. So it would be, uh, up to 500. You've got some options there.
I'm on the right page. I'm sorry, I'm on page seven.
Go down to the second section, violation penalty, nine point three eight zero five zero.
Oh, you know what? I think I took it out of my pocket.
But Matt, isn't the district attorney not even, um, filing misdemeanor?
Uh, not right now, although that is, this is an ordinance, we should write both cognitive of what's true now, but also what will be true in the future.
And also our, doesn't that mean that we can, well, we have our own city prosecutor?
Yes, the council can prosecute our misdemeanors and infractions, independent of the district attorney, through, uh, the city prosecutor. That is, that is very much an option.
Okay, so what, give, give us your sections. Mary Sue's not there. All right, Peter, why don't we turn to you? Did you have any amendments? I thought you had one or two that you had.
Well, my first, uh, question was on our school maps. Uh, does that have to be in this first reading as well?
No, the maps can be brought back next time. Um, so my recommendation would be, we take the direction to look at the private schools, if there's support from a majority, and the direction to take a close look at the precise streets, if there's a majority, and bring that back next time. The resolutions are not effective until the ordinance is effective, so they do not need to be adopted tonight.
Okay, so done, that, that we can do.
And just to add, I believe when we do our, um, walk to school, like our safe walk to school, that these streets and viewpoint school, you can't really even walk there. I mean, the way, it's not, I don't think they have a lot of people walking. And then the preschools on Lost Virginus are covered by the walking route to A, right? I think all the, the two preschools, um, are covered, uh, within the public school walking routes.
Uh, I will ask the, we'll, we'll double check that. I don't know the precise location of preschools off the top of my head.
We'll take those out. Staff will look at it, it'll come back when the second reading is ready. Any other amendments, Peter? From you?
Not from me, but I believe, uh, council member Maurer is looking at, uh, section nine point three eight point oh four oh A, which says 24 hours notice.
Yes.
I think that's the area that we need to address.
Uh, Matt, I don't know, um, if it's within a certain hours period or after enforcement offered. After several attempts or se- several, um, connections, I don't know, but help me with that.
What section are you on?
Uh, nine.
Nine.
Seven.
Eight oh four.
A.
Wait, what page?
Seven.
Oh, I'm here.
At the very top, A.
So, uh, we would need to be precise in an ordinance. So we could, if the council wanted to shift it back, not first contact, but second or third contact, it could be, um, after at least one, um, contact by, uh, city, county or other, uh, lawful, uh, unhoused persons services provider?
Matt?
Yes. Sure.
But does that, does that mean then someone's allowed to be sleeping in the, sleeping blocking public access to the sidewalk? So somebody in a wheelchair, some can't get by, children on their way to school have to walk onto Mohollan Highway or to Lost Virginus, when these people have already been asked to move from the location, have been offered services? And then these people, people are still allowed to stay in that position and could potentially make a situation unsafe?
That's the question for council. So as, if we were to adjust the ordinance to have, require second or third contact, then yes, the person would need, they would be able to stay where they were, be contacted, just client services come back, sheriffs or other, uh, service better come back again, offer services a second time upon the second declaration of service.
I have an idea.
Then they could be arrested. So that's, with the exception though, I would recommend maintaining the second sentence of nine thirty eight oh four oh A, uh, that any violation can be baited immediately if it poses an imminent threat to public health or safety. That's an undefined.
Say, what if we say like the one time or, but we leave it up to the deputy's discretion? Because.
That's what it says now. It says maybe.
Right, because this ordinance is really to provide lost hills deputies with options. They're not going out looking for transients with the intention of giving them a ticket. Like, that's not the intention.
Well, that's pretty much what we've been doing. Well, that's pretty much what we've been doing. We've been handing people a card and quote, moving them along.
That's not what's been happening.
Well, that's.
No, and Ga- well, why don't we bring Gabriel in to really explain, and, and Deputy Di Matteo, what the hours and days that they've spent engaging.
Exactly. That's what we need to allow for in this.
No, but not in situations, but with the, not in situations where it provides, if someone's blocking the sidewalk and there's no ADA access, or someone, children can't get to school, but I don't want, I don't want this, the takeaway to be that our deputies and secure all are out, like, pushing people along, because that's the opposite of what's been happening.
That was just in a staff report that they move them along.
Well, it's a fifty, but people, but when people need help, they're getting the help that they need through.
But we don't provide transportation. We haven't been providing transportation. How?
We have, people have been transported to hospitals, whether it's been in an ambulance, whether they've required a fifty, there've been, there have been people, people are not just left on the streets. People have been taken to places that they need to be taken. They've been reunified with families, our deputies and Gabriel, so people have looked for people's families. I mean, there's humanity that is going into this situation, but we've heard from callers that children are being woken in the night by, I mean, there's a balanced approach, and we have to look at it from all angles. So, but I just, I want people to understand the great work that, like, Lost Hills is doing and securing.
Yeah, I really understood. Understood, but now we're putting it in an ordinance.
I understand, and I'm, and, right, so I'm fine with what it says right now, because it says up at the discretion. Where's that discretion part?
It doesn't say.
It says may, may, and that, that's the discretion part. It's not required that they be removed on first contacts. It's discretionary.
And that's, Mayor's absolutely right. That's baked into the maze in both of the sentences, uh, in nine thirty eight oh four oh A. Um, may be abated by the city, may be abated in an imminent threat, and sheriffs are left to decide what's a imminent threat.
Then I'm, I'm fine with that, as long as we, um, you know, that secure all understands that, or whoever is, is working, that this is a process in connecting with them. I'm looking at the abatement, and I wanted to make sure that we left behind medication. When we remove people's belongings, too often, their medication, if they have any, is scooped up, and so is there a way to make sure that their medication is not taken from them? Uh, this is, this abatement is a little concerning to me.
A line could be added that, um, uh, a- a- any medication shall be maintained, uh, at, uh, an appropriate city location for at least, uh, seventy-two hours with notification to the person if possible. And that's some flexibility there. Maybe it's the sheriff station, maybe it's city hall. We sort out where. But if medication is, is seized from a person, then it, it's not immediately thrown away. That's certainly doable.
Yeah, that would usually include, like, uh, legal documents and stuff like that, too. Uh, valuable, valuable personal property, right?
Do you do an inventory, Gabriel?
Yeah, so the city, the city public work staff, um, we've never confiscated items from an individual, at least to my knowledge. Gabriel, you can correct me. If items have been left or discarded, they will, you know, and, and no one, um, is, is near them for quite some time, then it will be taken, um, stored for seventy-two hours. A notice will be posted when, when they have been retrieved and, and, uh, so there's some internal documents I can pass along to council about that.
All right, I have a couple council members with questions. Peter, your hands raised?
Yeah, I, it is. Thank you. I'm, uh, I, I guess I'm okay with the summary abatement, leaving it as it is. Is there maybe a way that we wanna put in that, uh, multiple encounter provision into the violation and penalty phase then?
That can be done, that, uh, if desired, I, I think I wouldn't, obviously it's council's choice, not mine. I would recommend you may just rely on the discretion baked, baked into the earlier part of the ordinance, together with the direction, when the council, if the council approves this for second reading, and the contract, provide additional policy direction to the sheriffs who are your contract law enforcement officials, and all of the contract service providers, that it serves first, enforcement second. But certainly, we can wordsmith some language in the agenda, in the ordinance if desired.
I, I'm okay with leaving that in the policy then, but again, maybe this goes back to staff. Uh, Michael, this, uh, the policy on providing services and following up and multiple encounters and transportation and all of this has to be addressed. And if we're gonna have an ordinance with this much teeth, we need a services policy that has twice as much compassion. So, uh, I leave that challenge up to staff.
All right, David?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to add or follow up whether or not needs to be in the ordinance, or something we'll be working on, the issue of transportation to the, uh, if we're taking, uh, unhoused individuals to the San Fernando Valley Community Mental Health Facility, that should be identified. There should be a, some plan or process for that. And secondly, I still would like, especially if we're doing an ordinance, we're talking about future and forward thinking. There may not be a private preschool or private school in a certain part of town, but we should anticipate that that could happen in the future, and we want, the idea is protection of youth or safety. Uh, we'd wanna keep that open-ended. That would be my other comment, and I do want, I do wanna compliment Officer Di Matteo, uh, Gabriel, uh, Michael, uh, AJ, everybody on staff, because I know, uh, quite well how much work they put in, how many times they go out and meet with individuals who are unhoused, or those, I could tell you right now, right outside my, where my office is, or on the streets, or wherever it may be, or on the sidewalk. It isn't just something where they send them on their way. They actually spend a great deal of time and effort getting to know, trying to help, trying to find solutions in the best possible situation, while at the same time protecting the safety and welfare of our citizens. So I do wanna identify that, too.
In following up to what David said, it seems to me that the, uh, transportation issue should be included in contractual services.
Yes, that would be my recommendation.
Rather than in, in the ordinance. So if you, when this comes back for the second reading with the contract, maybe there's a sep- it could even be a separate contract for transportation services. So we could have some time to look into what agencies or private groups provide that service if we pay for it. Okay, so with that, um, would anybody like to introduce the ordinance? And then with the understanding, as I said, that it would not come back until the contract's back, would it?
I'll make the introduction of this ordinance, but realizing that it will not come back until we have a contract for interim housing and support services to unhoused persons. So I would support introduction of ordinance number twenty twenty-one, three hundred ninety-four, um, adding Calabasas Municipal Code, chapter nine point three, use of the pub, use of the Calabasas, oh my gosh, I can't read, I'm tired, use of the public rights away and protection of schoolchildren, bus stops, critical infrastructure, and wildlife areas, and adoption of resolutions designating critical infrastructure and school routes.
I would second, I would second that with the, again, confirmation that all the contract and wraparound services would be simultaneously brought to us.
And one clarification, I think we're gonna defer the school routes reso at this time for rejiggering it would be, that's the recommendation at this point, to come back next time.
And we, what would, what would the wording be to make sure we still include a school routes with map?
It's, it's baked into the ordinance.
Okay, as lo- okay, as long as it's still inclusive.
Yes, the, and I'll, I'll note to respond to, um, Councilman Shapiro's point about new schools that may open up. The re- ordinance doesn't have the list of schools. That's why we did it by reso. So as schools open or close, the council can adopt the resolution, change in the school list. And the last point is, I wanna understand the motion also includes adding that provision about appropriate, uh, medication or valuable personal property maintenance.
And transportation, when we come back with services.
Correct.
What, what, what was the part about the property?
Uh, the, the city would maintain any medication or valuable personal property, and I'll wordsmith the precise language on that one. Uh, at an appropriate city location for at least seventy-two hours, uh, after seizure with notification to the apparent owner if possible.
Okay, then I would add the word inventory, too, so that we.
Agreed.
Okay.
And attachment be the resolution of the city council, uh, that designating critical infrastructure will come back with the school ordinance, with the school route resolution.
Okay, the or, the, it has been made, Alicia, that is acceptable to you? And David is a seconder, that's acceptable to you?
Yes.
Okay, then we are going to take a roll call vote, Murray?
Councilmember Kraut?
Yes.
Councilmember Shapiro?
Yes.
Councilmember Weintraub?
Yes.
Mayor Potemaur? You're muted. Mayor Potemaur?
Mary Sue?
Hi.
Mayor Visagen?
Hi.
Carrie Sizer, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you all for your contributions, particularly the staff and the two task force members. We appreciate your work.
Mayor Visagen, did we, um, or did we direct staff to look at a, um, safe parking program for families?
Thank you, Mary Sue. I was gonna ask about that, because, uh, according to my notes, two council members have asked about a safe parking, um, program. Uh, if there's a third, then we will bring this back to the task force and start exploring that.
Well, two is all you really need to look at it.
You have a third. Okay, so we have a third on that. Perfect, okay.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so it comes back when it's ready.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next, we have the informational reports to check register. Any questions on the check register, which is item twelve? If not, task force reports? Okay, briefly, we are still on ta- on target to having in-person, um, uh, conventions for the California Contract Cities Association next month, the League of California Cities next month. And you all got an invitation to the California Joint Powers Insurance Authority Convention in October, um, in San Diego. It's one we traditionally do not go to. Occasionally, we've gone to it. I, I've never been, um, just to let everybody know, this year they're combining the annual JPI meeting where we, we're supposed to be sending a delegate to vote with that convention, and I'm, I'm not going all the way to San Diego to cast votes. So anyone who wishes to do that, we can be designated by the council to do that. I anticipate it's gonna be nobody. They did not include a virtual option this year like they did last year. So I'm just letting everybody know that I, I just can't, I can't go all the way down there just to vote for ten minutes and come back. Um, other than that, um, I don't have anything else. David, I saw your hand up earlier.
Just on committees, the, uh, uh, budget committee, we met again in July to go over some of the, the changes or potential changes and funding, uh, coming forward. Also attended, and will be attending legislative commi- uh, SCAG legislative committee session, where we, uh, likewise opposed, uh, SB nine and some other items as well. I talked about the state budget and federal budget. I forwarded that on to Kenden, uh, for evaluation and looking at potential funds our city may get. Uh, there is an economic summit. All council members are invited to attend. SCAG holds that this December. I will have the details sent to everybody. And also attend the Valley Economic Alliance Board Meeting, uh, and the Education Workforce Committee, talking about college openings and the, our local colleges and what restrictions they're gonna have. And, uh, that is it. Thank you.
Okay, um, Peter?
Thanks, real quick, uh, a lot of things happened in July and August. Uh, Government Affairs was presented to our, uh, Chamber of Commerce, July twelfth and August ninth. Uh, as David mentioned, the Budget Subcommittee met on July thirteenth. We had a CPR and first aid training at City Hall, at Founder's Hall on July fourteenth. Uh, I attended along with the number of our, uh, emergency response team and, uh, members of our Public Safety Commission, uh, and several members of our staff as well, so you should feel in safe and in good hands here in the city of Calabasas. Um, we've, uh, obviously talked a lot about our homeless task force this evening, uh, but I do wanna mention that the Fire and Sheriff, LA County Fire and the Sheriff's Host Committee, uh, did meet here on August fifth. Um, it was a phenomenal meeting where we got to see the, uh, the way that LA County deals with, uh, with, uh, their homeless population. And, um, uh, lastly, uh, the, uh, community center, uh, we've, uh, we've met to discuss, uh, uh, the community center on August third here at the city. And, uh, details, uh, will be forthcoming.
Alicia?
Actually have a question for a future agenda item.
Okay, so we'll move on to city manager's report. Do you have anything, Kennen?
Um, Mr. Mayor of Council, I do have a couple of items, uh, during public comment of the, um, uh, issue of um, in- increased air traffic over our area would came up. We've received several comments and questions from the community. We are working to synthesize some of the information that's available. We have reached out to Congressman Lou's office as well on that, and so we'll have more information to, uh, present not only to the council, but to the community in the near future. A second, um, a- as council is aware, we have had a, a few cases of, um, COVID that have been associated with city facilities, uh, and not necessarily, uh, outbreaks resulting from being in the facility, but, uh, individuals who participated in programs or were in city facilities and then testing positive. We have reached out to other cities and we're looking at a, uh, program to do mandatory vaccinations and/or, um, uh, testing. Uh, what we found is, is several of those that have already announced, uh, similar initiatives aren't, uh, ready to even move forward. And so a- as we've reached out for guidance from some of the other cities, Long Beach, Pasadena, things like that, uh, they've made those announcements, but they do not have their own guidelines in place. So please, uh, stay tuned on that. We will be coming back with more information and are taking that very seriously, and I just want the council to know that. Uh, similarly with, in regards to COVID, a- at this meeting, we had planned to discuss hybrid meetings. Um, you know, coming back in, in a combination of in-person and over Zoom, and to get direction from the council. Our, our staff is ready, uh, they've tested different models, and we have the capability of doing that. We postponed that discussion for a couple of reasons. One, we knew the, the discussion on unhoused individuals was going to be lengthy, and so we did not wanna add it to the agenda. But then second, uh, as we've watched the number of COVID cases uh, go up in the county, uh, we thought it would be best to wait at least one more meeting, if not two, before we have that discussion with the council. But we are ready, based on the, that, on the technology and our capabilities to do that. So we want you to be aware that we're having those discussions. Uh, number, next item, I just want to, uh, let council know that over the last couple of weeks, I've received probably anywhere from four or five just, uh, notes from, uh, individuals in the community complimenting our staff on different, uh, uh, tasks or responsibilities, whatever that might be. I just wanna recognize our employees. We do have a good group of employees. They, they're diligent in their efforts, and it's always wonder from, from wonderful to, as the city manager, to receive those emails from the community, uh, unsolicited, where people, uh, just notice something and, and see, uh, a talent and, uh, or a kind gesture, and then acknowledge that. And then finally, uh, council, I do want to recognize, um, our, our city attorney, uh, Matt Summers was recognized as one of the top forty, under forty, top forty attorneys in the state of California under forty, and so we wanna compliment, um, Matt on that and, and, uh, and send our congratulations on that as well.
Thank you greatly. I was glad to be recognized in, in large part for my work for Calabasas. Thank you so much.
Okay, we will go to future agenda items. I'll start out, uh, at the appropriate time when we have something we can actually discuss more than just generically. And with appropriate outside agencies involved, I'd like to agendize the discussion of air traffic. I know that's been alluded to. Um, we have received many complaints, and we've already discussed this during the meeting, so, uh, I don't, I don't know that it'd be ready for the next meeting, but sometime soon. Um, it was mentioned, uh, a meeting or two ago about the senior center, uh, the shade structure that they would like the canopy. Um, I don't know where that got left, if there was enough direction given, but I certainly would not want months to pass with no action on it. So if you, i- if additional information is needed and direction from the council, then I would like staff to get that direction soon and start working on it. If you feel you have enough direction to go forward, I'd like staff to go forward. And that would be in consultation with the savvy seniors and the senior steering committee. Um. The deadline is approaching for the opt-out slash opt-down for the, uh, Clean Power Alliance. I've, I continue to feel complaints from the public that they are encountering problems with opting out. I've not seen a great campaign by the city as was promised. So I would like. Uh, I, I, I really don't want to have to agendize it again. I'd really like staff to just simply. Move forward with an educational programming, explaining people's options as was, as was advertised we would do prior to the deadline.
Mayor Visagen, if I may, um, our staff has been working diligently with Clean Power Alliance. To prepare for the, um, switch to a hundred percent. And if there's any, um. Complaints, I hope that they're going to Mike, Michael McConville, so we can address them quickly, but. There is a robust package that you all be receiving very soon.
Okay, so as long as that's coming, then, then I don't need to, to worry about that. Um.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I have it scheduled for August twenty fifth, a presentation by the CPA.
Okay, I didn't know that. All right. Then finally, as was discussed by Kendon, I think, um. I understand the delays of meeting in person, but. Um, because we're not meeting in September, I would like to at least get a tentative plan to discuss it. At our next meeting in August, so that if we decide we want to meet in person, it'll go into effect in October. Because I don't want to wait till October to get the plan in effect and then provide direction to staff. So they, they will have a whole month or two to work on it. So those are my four items. Um, Alicia, you said you had an item?
It's kind of more of a discussion point, but. As we're talking about having our employees. That to require employees to be vaccinated and if they don't get vaccinated to require testing, it got me thinking that. That makes perfect sense and I'm in complete support of that, but it also would make greater sense to me that. We require the same thing for people visiting our public buildings. I'm not talking about doing what the city of LA is proposing with private businesses. I think that's impossible to oversee and. There's no way to enforce that, but I think that as we're trying to get COVID under control and put this behind us. It would make sense to protect our staff as well, that the people coming into our buildings have to show the same proof. So. That's just something that I've been thinking about, following what's been happening with the county and the state and now to go into hospitals. You have to show proof of vaccination or a negative COVID test. It's just if we're asking our staff to do something, I think we should ask people visiting. Our facility is the same as well. And I think it would keep our city facility safe and get this behind us sooner.
Okay. Um, I don't know if that, is that an internal policy? Is that something you want agendized?
I, just putting it out there, I have no idea the proper protocol. I'd leave that to. The mayor, Kendon, Matt, but that's just something that I don't, I'm putting it out there.
Yeah, Alicia, what Matt and I can do, let's, Matt, let's start talking about the legality of that and what we're seeing with other cities. And how that is rolled out if it possible. So we'll, we'll start that conversation and then bring it back.
And, and you know what? I'm okay not look, not necessarily waiting for other cities. You know, I want to look out for our residents and our employees. And the people in our community as well, so.
Okay, so, uh, i- if in fact, as I think it might require a resolution of the council. It would need to be done two weeks from now, or else we would have to wait two months. Because of our lack of meetings in September. So that would make, render it almost useless. So for, if it does require, as I think it might, a resolution, please have that ready for August twenty fifth.
We can do that. We'll take a look at it. My, my rough sense off the top of my head is the same. I think we would need council action, but we'll confirm that. And bring a sense back. And if we think it needs council action, we'll, uh, draft a reso for council consideration.
And that, that should not be on consent because there might be discussions of various aspects of it.
Absolutely, that one would need full dis- full discussion.
Okay, uh, future agenda items. Peter, do you have any?
Uh, not specifically, but I think, uh, this makes a good point. Uh, some items like, uh, COVID nineteen protocols have to jump to the front of the line. But one of the things we talked about before was a, uh, priority setting workshop. So that we can put all of our best ideas out there and tackle them in order instead of, uh. Just, uh, bringing them forth every time somebody from the public makes a, uh, a recommendation. I don't know. Uh, how it's been done in the past, but, uh, both of our interim city managers recommended that approach and I think that's something we need to start moving towards.
Okay, I'll, I'll discuss with you offline, maybe get, get some more information from you, what you would like to, to have on the agenda. Um. Let's see, David, did you have agenda items?
I have some. I'll go ahead and email them to you and Kendon if that's okay.
That's fine.
Thanks.
Are any of them for August twenty fifth? Like have to be?
No.
Okay, um, Mary Sue?
Can you remind me why we're not meeting in September?
Because we have Jewish holidays, we have the, uh, League Convention, we have Contract Cities Convention. Contract Cities and the Jewish holidays kind of were the same reason. And we had no other available.
There's no first or third Wednesday we could meet?
We asked and, and one person or another couldn't do it.
And Mayor. Mr. Mayor, but we are meeting on September twenty eighth.
Yes, we do have a special meeting for September.
Well, especially, yes, we have a special meeting.
Okay.
Right.
But, but we're limited in what we can enact there. If you want Mary Sue, I could ask again for everyone to do a Google thing.
I just look at our list of future agenda items and all the work to be.
All right, well, Mari, put out and if you could put out, just, just put out every day, every weekday. And we'll see, because as I remember, we did that and, and we had no one day.
Let's try to.
We did it earlier in the year, yeah, and unfortunately, some of them.
Can we try it again? Maybe someone's cleared up. I don't know.
Could you, could you kindly make it a doodle?
A doodle, that's.
Yes, I'll do, I'll do a doodle.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, uh, I see no other agenda items. We're, it's now a nine forty-five. We'll adjourn and have a limited, uh, closed session. We won't stay terribly late. So we, you've been sent a link. Thank you, members of the public. We'll see you in two weeks on August twenty fifth.